Be reappointed to like the city alcohol beverage commission twenty twenty one. Dale, all of the favors?
Yes.
I know. Uh solid waste management board uh that is they are awesome and they all expect. He said I take their motion to uh reappoint Joe Watson to the county's solid waste management. Um Dale second. All of the favors?
Yes.
I know. Uh emergency management um now that was Joe Williams. Have someone um go on emergency management advisory council twenty twenty one. Jim?
Yes.
Uh yeah, sorry, Jim McGee, sorry. Uh you was the emergency management advisory council?
Joe Whitting uh Joe Whittington was on that and um I don't know how often uh uh Joe Whittaker has the meeting and those two mayors are on it.
Right now we're sort of spread out in that uh because of COVID and that. We're gonna have it shortly, but we usually have a long.
There's about four meetings a year on that.
Is he on there?
Yeah, he's on. Jim? Jim? Do you wanna be on the man uh emergency management advisory council?
That'd be fine.
Jim Lee? All of the favor?
Yes.
Uh insurance committee, uh it's Tom Boo. Want to be reappointed to the administration. Make their motion, I think Dale second. Jim Lee? All of the favor?
Yes.
I know. Uh first these are the uh county employee benefit trust uh that's actual time. And their motion to reappoint Tom to the employee benefit trust fund. And wait second. Dale, all of the favor?
Yes.
I know. Uh planning commission and Dale Foxley, Dale Dale Stew. Okay, is there a motion to reappoint uh Dale to the uh planning commission? Second, Jim Lee? All of the favor?
Yes.
I know. Uh reappoint uh Rodney Norman to the board of the.
On what?
Is there a motion to reappoint Rodney Norman to the uh board of the. Jim Lee, all of the favor?
Yes.
Commission sign off on that, we don't have to.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, we have um county report here, jail report.
That's what they just passed down.
So. Why do we increase the number?
If you guys didn't address it for them, you did even uh the concert numbers.
Also, maybe you know, that was all in there.
The numbers come down, we're finally gonna black on them. Um I did reach out to Lester last week, so then they talked to me. Yeah, I came to you that helped, Mr. They sent the guy, other guy fixed problems. The guy said, hey, you got more problems, call me. Okay. So I don't know what they should work, they'll care if one of them should be.
Going back to the January.
That's what it was. First day. Uh so I thought that one was the condition wasn't worth, had worked for a long time. Can't figure out, can't figure out. I finally reached out, I was, yeah, I think has a guy. Five minutes later, the guy called me today, all the others know. So I'm seeing you guys with the D J, just want to do some more. Thanks for hanging in. So hey, anything else needs fixed, let me know. So as far as the January, they're actually sending somebody out to look into that. Plus, making sure they're not speeding channel. So we gotta get that up from that on that. So. I mean, all this would be made, we were behind there, you know. As far as I know, they never submitted anything else. So.
That's the number, five hundred fifty thousand. That weren't hanging on to.
So for this. My son, he's got two of them. I'll take it right now.
And we are having a walk through.
Yes. Um. Because we did, we should be worried something. He's coming up. They want to get dinner, they want to walk in. Very, very.
Now, whatever.
Sorry, I'm sorry. You didn't introduce myself.
Hey, go watch.
They have a sample, they will have a name.
Yeah, so going into Halloween.
Only you can, you know, push it out.
Okay.
So far, so far.
The calendar.
Oh, instead of on here, but we did.
The twenty twenty. I didn't have a.
Okay. Okay.
It's already signed.
Oh, so you can get a couple now. Okay, so this is. Oh, let's see now, who?
It wasn't.
Wait a minute, they all signed this, but he wasn't at last month's meeting.
I know, he came in, he was grabbing things and signing them.
So should we mark out his name?
Unless.
State more accounts if they read, if he didn't vote on it.
Can you just put a line through and it's like he wasn't on our meeting? Maybe it's we can't read this.
I was a colleague that we noticed too that uh on the same deputy to courthouse that our amount was not drafted and corrected also.
Commissioners. You have anything?
We we have a couple things.
Yes, and I made that Andrew. Maybe with laundry that they could be of zoom, you know, everybody. I missed the last uh zoom, I think Tim, you know, was on that one. So Andrew did reach out to RQAW with some questions because they did send us a couple of proposals. Um one of them were the twenty two thousand arrangement, but there is another one, thirteen thousand. Um so I'll let Andrew gonna talk on what that is. And we we're gonna meet with BIS Digital about some new recording system that their court was fifty to sixty five thousand. So after this meeting, I think Andrew and I, you know, are gonna meet with a judge because, you know, we could um get a sound system maybe under ten thousand dollars, which is huge. So RQAW is saying that a hundred fifty, under a hundred and fifty thousand, they can get the two offices in here. I'm looking chartering for the veteran officer and then renovations downstairs in the community room that will have a commissioner's office so that we have access to print or copy or whatever, you know, during a meeting. And then they'll be stored for an extension office and just boring savings. Um um so we're kind of hashing out the file of decor, you know, wrong one. Overkill, by name, so that we wanted to look nice and.
Do I have Chris and or Brianna on Zoom?
Um uh B. Barms.
Hi, we, I know I can't hear super well. Um is there a a microphone by chance? Or can you get closer to the computer or maybe it's just my audio, but it it's very faint. So I wanna make sure if anyone has questions, we can hear you adequately.
Good morning, Brianna, can you hear me?
I can hear you much better, yes, thank you.
There we go. Good morning, this is Andrew. Hey, we're just going over kind of the details on the two quotes from RQAW and kind of what our plans were. Um the initial, the initial twenty two thousand, I'm not sure if that's been paid or not, was and and I'm just gonna go through this, Brianna, if you have any details, just speak up um over top me and I'll quit. Um that twenty two thousand was for the initial design of both the main level and the lower level um offices. There was an additional thirteen thousand that's gonna be coming through you guys. Uh and that was for the mechanical, electrical and plumbing designs. So when this gets sent out to bid uh from different contractors, there'll be a full set of drawings. If they can see architectural, mechanical, electrical plumbing. So there'll be um the twenty two and the thirteen, so thirty five thousand total in architectural fees um to RQAW. Um once that's said and done, I'm sitting down with Chris now um and Brianna and going through a couple of different options. You know, we don't really know where we're gonna stand on this one fifty. Um we know we have thirty five committed to them. We're assuming we can get this IT equipment in for uh ten thousand or less would be great opposed to the fifty or sixty thousand, which leaves the rest of construction. Um there's a couple of options that we were up in the air about downstairs of what we wanted and what we didn't want. So we're gonna throw those in as an alternate. So we'll base bid it now and then there'll be add-on features and if we can afford it and it fits in our budget and we'll go ahead and get what we want that way. But if we don't, it's it's excluded, we can say no, we don't want that. I think the most important thing for us is that we set it up right the first go around. So we're not coming back five years from now and saying, why did we do this or why did we not do this? Um especially from an IT world, we need a functional but not over the top functional. Um and Chris and Brianna know that. Uh another big topic is what we're gonna do with the heating system in this courthouse. That's been a huge debate on how we go with some of their stuff because it it changes what they're doing, especially this room up here. Um downstairs, I think we're gonna go ahead and keep a self-contained system. Up here, they're gonna utilize some of this heating system that we have. And if they change it um here in a year or two, then then it can all be worked with. So we're not wasting money in this room on stuff that is just gonna be torn out in a year or two. Brianna, does that catch us up kind of where we are?
Yeah, you are spot on.
That makes me feel good.
Great first council meeting.
What's I need to add to that? Um I know, Chris, we're gonna be, so their plans were to have a final set of drawings done by Friday or Monday. I kind of, when I sat down with Chris last week and reworked some of this stuff, it's gonna take him maybe to end the week until we get final set of drawings. They're both planning on being at our commissioners meeting next week um that we can meet in person to go over some of that. So we'll have a better feel of drawings, a better feel for IT um for our commissioners meeting next week. Brianna, you have anything for us?
No, I I mean, I think you covered everything. We we really just appreciate this opportunity to help you guys out. I apologize for not being there today. I unfortunately am in quarantine um until the middle of this week. So if there are any questions, we would love to answer those for you.
So I have a question, the thirty five thousand, is that coming out of CARES money? And the council hasn't approved that. I don't even think the council has been showing any clients or anything and.
Well, we did, I did share with Jim Lee.
We obviously were talking about this business, but that's all.
I have not forwarded the plans to any other council member um because it was just kind of in the, we hadn't really finalized, you know, what we were wanting to do as Andrew said. But yeah, if the council would like copies of their proposal of the electrical and plumbing and all that, um we can certainly give that to colleagues, so should get forward that to all the council. Because the commissioners haven't approved that last, and we will be addressing that at our next meeting.
You know, I mean, I think I think the council members will wanna see, they're not gonna wanna approve two thirty five thousand dollars when no one's even been here and given some plan or.
Well, you already approved the twenty two thousand, we did that, um the previous commissioners did that last year. So this thirteen is on top, like Andrew said, it's the heating, the plumbing.
Mechanical, yeah, yeah.
Twenty two thousand, where did we approve that? You said commissioners approved it, is it on our agenda as well?
Yeah, it's been, so that was before I came on board. So that was done with the CARES money before it went into county general, so so they were able to spend that with a commissioner or without council approval. All the money now that's in county general, the the balance of the the CARES money has to be approved by both commissioners and council.
I got it, but I have a question. You know, I've not seen anything. Not one thing about anybody really adding on, I got caught it on the fly. You know, we're gonna go down here and we're gonna do this. I never had any drawings, any information, nothing, until I find out the fact that through the CARES Act, we're gonna go down and we're gonna make a new commissioners and council area. I have not received nothing. Numbers, nothing, other than the fact now I see the CARES Act was gonna pay for X, Y, Z money. And we got a person on the line here and the council hasn't received a place. That's the question I got.
Yes, and that was, let's go backwards, when this all started, um it was anticipated that we're trying to get this job done under a hundred fifty. The council was aware of it. Yes, we had discussion, I know I talked to Dudley, I talked to Jim Lee, um maybe a little bit to Bill, you know, on the side, but you know, this was all in the open, we didn't have, no one gave us a final cost of what it was gonna be because they had to design it. And so we were all waiting for that information to come. Yes, there were some drawings that were sent to us, to Tim, to to myself. But they were trying to get a feel of what what are we wanting, you know, what kind of design? And so I did share that. The other day I shared with Jim Lee, I showed him the design, what we're gonna have, just a simple ten seat, you know, with a side table for the county attorney, the auditor and her deputy. So that everything is very functional or that it's not overkill. Our hack, our snafu, I think, was a lot of the um getting a new sound system. And we did get a quote and we were supposed to meet with them, but you know, we were trying to push it off because I I felt like that was gonna be the last thing that you do. And so we just didn't meet, plus the cost was a huge factor. I wasn't comfortable spending fifty to sixty five thousand dollars of CARES money or sound system that we could follow and get done a whole lot cheaper. And so we are, you know, looking at the back.
So I guess maybe explain to them how months ago this kind of got rolling with the HR up here and why, why it all happened to be? That might help because it helped me clarify what was going on downstairs.
Well, we first started submitting the paperwork to get, you know, of course, we did check the Barnes and Warner and it was allowable expense for the CARES Act. So that's where it started.
But the purpose of this room here?
The purpose of this room, we need an HR. We are not compliant, um the auditor needs some um separation with HR having their own office. They should not be open to the other individuals in that office or the public. They need some privacy. Veteran officer, again, he's down there to open, they might have a meeting and he's got clients in there he can't really talk to about sensitive information.
And not ADA compliance. There's steps entering from both ways into that room.
So we're just trying to utilize this room to offices. We don't have anything in the courthouse. Um with nine one one moving in, that basically took one or two offices and with probation, they're then, they're using up everything that's even available, hall, that's whatever, you know, just for office space. So we were just trying to be smarter in our funds and utilize this for a need that we, that is huge for the county. Preventing any lawsuits, you know, that could possibly come our way for one thing. And then the room down there is bigger, so you know, if we're gonna think about the social distancing, then yes, I think we're all in agreement that let's use the CARES Act money to to do that job, to do it smart. And that was the only room that um the lights have not been updated in the courthouse.
And Chris and I and Brianna, when we had spoke last week, I've asked a question, you know, I had been told we had this one fifty that everybody was trying to stay within with the CARES Act money. And I think it's still very doable, extremely doable, even if we can get this IT number down um to stay within that number. I don't see any reason why it would exceed that number.
How much money is in the county general for CARES Act?
Uh right now, there's about two hundred nine thousand. Um I've been working with the auditor's office on billing the rest of the third, second and third quarter um to Warren County. So I'm anticipating another eighteen thousand coming back because we went after a hundred percent. And so I'm trying to get our portion back so that we can put it back into county general. Cause when we did get our money back from Edda, we put it back into the local health maintenance and the health trust funds a hundred percent, which Warren County should have done, they're like three, 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 three. So I've got all those figures, I'm working with the auditor and the payroll to make sure that we get our money back. And when it comes back, part of it's gonna come in back to county general. Colleen will put that money back into that line item, so the two oh nine should increase. Obviously, we have a few things that needs to be subtracted from there, but it's, you know, not that much. So we do have over two million dollars.
You're gonna ask the council for, you know, about two thousand dollars? Is that what you're telling me? The CARES Act took care of that twenty two thousand, so therefore you're asking us to take care of the rest of that construction?
Now, on that twenty three thousand, we have not spent all that twenty three thousand. Thirteen thousand in the link of Vandalwood, so let's concentrate on the twenty two thousand. We have spent some of that, um this last bill was six thousand dollars. I would have to check and see if we used half of that so far.
But still, but still, you're asking the council for money?
To use the.
That's right. So I would suggest to, uh after it's time to the council, that I think we need A, B, C, come from what spin span to side dog and newer than we go over there. And we just another angle there, and then there's a little room. And then every council member needs that information, that's how I would get, give me a page.
Well, and if you look at past commissioner minutes, or council minutes, that information has been in the minutes. Anything that has CARES Act has paid for, has been put in the minutes, or on the agenda in the minutes for about council commissioners.
There's other things on my mind too that um while we're doing this, asking them on this room and that somebody else is gonna take another place in this courthouse, say the veterans office. All that's been fought out, how much is from the cost? Somehow, you know, if you brought up the point about how we're gonna eat this building, how we affect this room of the county going forward, we've already talked about void. We've also had a situation here that our, some of this information has been approved and been done. We have a meeting on this, while we were gonna go. I suggest before we start doing this, you better find out about the eating system.
And and that's a huge topic concern that that I brought up as well. We need to kind of know which way we're going on that. Chris totally agreed on that um from RQAW as well. That's a topic that we're all gonna have to have. I have some package with me that I just went over with, they have been presented in months prior. Um so I just got brought up to speed and yes, that is a huge topic.
Something else too, is there a law that came through the state that we gotta make this adjustment? You gotta establish a hero law that the auditor's office is not, is not appropriate for the amount of space that is needed? I mean, is there a law that's passed now that we didn't get?
Twenty years are in better service deal with medical stuff, you can't talk about that.
So.
Really, it's been doing it for twenty years.
In that way.
They just talking about white nurses that takes care of all the medical bills. When they get a phone call, they need privacy to talk about situations.
And so we just didn't clean up here.
Employee comes in, they have a doctor's letter or something and it's laying your desk and somebody else goes by and sees it. It just takes one person to complain and turn it in and we're toast.
We we have done what we have, could do in the past, um whether they need kind of in here and how private. in here and how private the phone call that's been done. But there's a lot of times you're, you're talking really low on the phone now so that the others in the office cannot hear you. And, um, it's really not, not good for anybody.
I'll speak on that, Tom. Privacy law is very, very strict. And I'll tell you, numbers on lawsuits don't, are not in five digits. You're talking seven digits. That's the starting. And I know what we need right now for us, we're tightening down on our privacy. There was a, a annual service in Atlanta, Georgia that got, got hammered by HIPAA. They're in seven, almost eight digits right now. They're not, uh, counting on facility. So to tell you, we're such a diverse county. Because if you look at how, how the annual services pay, how the county's paying, all that is very diverse. You need HR in a private room or that nowhere to make you hear you. Cause the first time something gets out, there ain't enough money in this guy in paper. Is that right now?
I will say that we do a good job of keeping things locked up the best that we can.
So, Tom, also, I, I think, uh, of course I've been, I've had exactly one week this morning to get my brain wrapped around some of the stuff that's been going on in the county and kind of get my feet wet with what's been passed, what's trying to get passed, et cetera. Um, I think we are all kind of, this, this isn't something that's going to be approved next. Commission meeting or anything like that. We haven't even received final set of drawings yet. So I think once we receive that, towards the end of this week, we will, of course, share that. Um, there's some pretty limited, so it definitely is great, but it doesn't mean anything. Um, once you see it, I've, I've not seen the final set of drawings yet. Chris is working on them as we speak. Um, as far as cost goes, total cost, that hasn't even been budgeted or estimated because drawings aren't complete yet. So the only thing obligated is the 22,000 that's been approved and the 13,000 to finish approving the drawings. Once we have that part set, we can start getting cost appropriated and, and estimated. Um, once those bids come in, we can tell you exactly, it's going to be a hundred thousand, a hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars, you know? So I, I think once you can hear the final number, that'll help everybody grasp what we're up against. And then we can talk about it. If it comes to a $300,000, I don't think it's, you know, we'll say, hey, this ain't going to work. Um, I don't think, the only part that we're obligated to is a set of drawings that's been approved and in the mix of being done right now for the 35,000.
I understand the privacy act. I've been a teacher for 40 years.
Yeah, of course.
Um, my point is, I didn't know we had a desk set off in the auditor's office that was doing all of the health and privacy work. I was aware of that. I understand it has to be done. But, um, my point is, if, if you were just bringing to me, I was a much better council member. I would like to see things in paper and drawings and numbers and things like that. That would mean all that I did.
I think we'd like a line item, we'd like to see a line on you, but.
Of, of course.
Though I don't know about the rest of the country, but I think that's all we have to have.
And Tom, if, once the budget is rolled into the financial, I did at the end of December, try to wrap my head around what our actual balance was left of the CARES Act. And I came up with a 290,000. Um, so I did put that on a line item. Now next, this year, um, you probably will have to, which kind of took from the group health to do that. Um, so this way you'll know how much money we have to spend. Because otherwise, you just, you have to go over your additional preparation. And at the time, in 2020, you know, the council decided to just transfer money from group health to that line item and so we've been spending out of it. So our balance now is 209,000. Now we do need to re-put some of those, um, for Warren County. And then we'll put it back into that line item.
So out of, out of the 22,000, what, what has been spent out of that?
Um, I have a little piece of paper. I know there's 6,000 was just spent here recently.
You had your break now.
Well, I'll have to get that extra. I think about half the money.
Okay, so you said it's half plus the additional 13 that you're requesting.
Oh, so can you give me some kind of an idea? Me, I don't know about the rest of the guys. What's, what's your thought here? We got, if you want to do this, what's your kind of a thought? Where to move people, all the privacy thing we're talking about? Do we have a thought in mind? Some kind of, you have some kind of an idea?
You mean moving them along?
Yeah, I mean, what's your thought behind this and so on?
That hasn't really been addressed.
Okay.
Um, I know, I haven't talked with the auditor treasurer yet. And they're, they do have space in between their offices. Whether we can move an individual there while this is getting done. I mean, that's going to be the main thing, the veteran officer. Where's he going to go on all the renovations going on? That is probably the only problem that I'm, I'm aware of right now.
I, I can see it, this is my brain, um, coming from the construction world. I can see this space going on first, um, getting these two rooms built out to get the veterans situated because that downstairs is going to take longer than this. This year isn't that big of a renovation project up here to split this room. Um, let, let the veterans office, get this, these two rooms done. Get the auditor situated in their HR, get the veterans situated in their room, which is where I believe you guys would be sitting. And then that leaves the downstairs, you know, empty. And the timeline on that, if it happens a month, six months later, then so be it. It, it wouldn't create a big hassle as long as the veterans had his office up here.
Where are we going to meet in between times?
Well, that would be, that would be a hiccup. Um, I think it'd be easier to move out someplace throughout than, than anything. Opposed to destroying both locations at the same time, then you have everybody in a train wreck. Would be my idea, if we change it, then that's fine.
So where, where do we have this meeting about heating system?
Well, you know, if you guys want to tell me where you guys stand on it, um, work, you guys just tell me where you're standing, I'll tell you where, where I feel.
We've already had discussions about the boilers back before the end of the year that we wanted to, always love that and they were supposed to be worked on. So we keep this thing rolling. And when I'm in, I mean, they, they just stop and move stuff. I mean, I don't.
Now, Tom, I, I agree. And right before that job got stopped, Scott Williams was down there and he's just throwing his hands up in the air and I go, what's the matter? And he said, you guys are throwing money out the window. I go, what do you mean? And he said, this is not going to, doing this chimney is not going to fix the issue. I said, well, explain to me what the issues are. There's more than one or two issues, is that not right, Rick? And so I think that's where the council commissioners and whoever else needs to be involved, Rick, Bob, whether you bring Scott Williams in here or Ido, but we need to have a sit down. It's like, what are our 10 things or what things need to be done? And what thing needs to be done first? And we're jumping again, we're jumping around what needs to be done first. We're going to like number, step number seven and eight. And that's where I think Scott was getting frustrated. He said, you guys are just throwing money out the window. And, and he's like chucking, but he is frustrated, was he not frustrated, Jim? And so I want to avoid that. I think all of us want to avoid that. We want to have, um, what's going to work best for this courthouse? What was presented to us in the past? Yeah, there were some good options and some of them were very costly. Is that going to be the best fit for the courthouse? I don't know. I would like to go to another place that has some of those, um, installed in their buildings and see how, how it's working five years later. I don't know about you, but that's, you know, what I'm thinking.
So those three options that we had back in December, November, December, about our heating system and that we kind of thought had some decisions on. Are they still employed? Are they, do you want to use those people?
I don't know.
Cause that's why I was coming to you.
Yes.
You do, and I, also, okay, you said we need to get something done as quickly as possible. So I, I'm just waiting, uh, maybe we have to run on new orders. Maybe once a week, it's ready to set. We're still waiting on a couple of motors. Hopefully that's a problem. But if you're only, if you go over your orders, you're not in order. You got light hot water system. We got four scenes in this courthouse can be hot water. That's it. It's always been that, I guess, yeah. That needs to be fixed. Can we do, do the motors, do the light? You gotta redo every ratio, put all new control on. The courtroom is going to be big. Cause you got a lot of forced air fans and it will be redone. It's not going to be cheap, but it's a cheap operation to run when it's all completed, you know? I think there's probably a hundred dollars to that. But Brenda's got an ideal team, that new company, if you're going to do it, I wouldn't do it half, I'd do it the whole way. Cause that includes air, right? The two million?
It was, it was redoing the heating fan there. And, um, the auditor's office, we recently, uh, bought a new air conditioning unit. And so that's about $10,000. And how many did you say?
Right now, really, aside, just aside the heat, we got at least eight or nine air conditioners that are thirty years and plus old right now, that need to be redone. The courtroom we got two, we're right now on one with our human role and parts on. The second one, you got the front, on the air conditioner right now.
And I'm sure they're not running efficiently, so it's costing money.
Yeah, they're all going to be out there, they're good, they're friends. But like Brenda said, we put a new frame in, we live without. So I'm counting on at least eight of them to be fit. I would do one at a time or do them all, we got.
I think in the past, um, you know, some of the counties have had a economic development plan or what are we going to, what are our priorities for this building? And I don't think, we're always behind the eight ball and we do it after something happens.
We're not being progressive, we're being right on the line of the ball.
So, um, yeah, we do need to sit down and there's a lot of things to address. And we're real aware of it and I think commissioners need to work with the council on this. But we also need to work with Rick and Bob, they help us out tremendously, um, here getting, keeping things running in the courthouse. And yes, we're on a city electric that's a lot cheaper than if we were out in the country because the jails' electric today is huge compared with the city. So yes, it's not quite as hardship, you know?
But I, I think right now, I think it's very important, important to figure out this heat cooling. That's number one. You don't have to be in the water. You know, when you have to heat go down or travel in summer, there go down, you have 30, 30 women saying, well, it's hot here.
I was talking about the murals and all that, and they restored these murals. And we got that terrible problem up by the courthouse office.
Well, that's, that's, that's the factor that they're talking about. Chimney can come down. You need a liner, plus there's no liner. The skin will go out, it goes out, it comes down. But you got your, the water, that horse comes.
Do you mean that the cost would be for a liner? I'm new to the game, so you guys have probably discussed it, but.
I don't.
That was not in the bid to put a liner in, and so that's what I kind of went.
That's interesting, that's interesting that they would not include that in the bids because that is the biggest problem. And they knew that probably when they looked at it.
Well, that was the only issue. The contractor is staying in, following mine. That, I live in a 25 house. Okay? We, I had to bring the board, there's no liner, they didn't have a liner. So why can't you stack them? You know, that's why they called it off.
Hey, I'm a woman and I can tell that you need a liner in the chimney.
There's not one.
I mean, yeah, I realize that the age of the building, that wasn't something that was done decades ago. But looking at it today, even if they did not request a liner be put in the bid, it should have been put in the bid. Who are these people and what are they thinking?
Well, you know, the contractor should have passed, at least for me.
But again, the contractor should have came back and said, you did not request this. This would be an additional, here's what it is, here's what you asked for.
They did. So don't call them.
Maybe we need to go back to those and ask them, who, what it costs.
Who was the contractor?
That was Jared Kelly.
That was Jared Kelly.
They had to be at the school and so commissioner went and talked to him. So he is down in the boiler room. You were there, Scott was down there and that's when we started having a conflict. And I came down there and they just started ringing, we got to speed. And that's when I made the phone calls to Jim and then like, what do you want to do? Because this guy is supposed, he's pulling guys off the job and I'm here on Monday to do this. But he's telling me it's not going to fix what the problem is.
But they should have thought, I'm sorry, honestly, the contractor. They already set up a 25,000. They're, they're, the contractor, he's come back on the town and said, look, operate for the crew, money, money, meter. And then the last second, everybody changed their mind and contractors go, well, that's, that's fine. We don't want to be in charge. But he easily could have said, you're a contractor, we want our 25,000. You know? There were big, 25,000, that's, that's the problem.
Tom, I don't think one meeting is going to, we're going to come up with a solution. I think it's going to take one, one meeting to do, to do it right.
You're talking about.
Yes.
The council and the commission having a meeting, I agree, I agree.
But I mean, we, we certainly, you know, if we can meet, I mean, I don't know if you want to have a joint meeting or what you want to do.
Why? What meeting that was, uh, exactly the meeting that was fully discussed.
I think what you said, I think it went all two, not just the 10 of us.
That, that.
Uh, we need some.
It's like, just be working meetings, working through this, like you called me the other day and I came over here to hear this.
And we did do some things, Daddy.
It was just the thing to get, get the information. I saw a picture with a depth of tenure on it and just allowed the room for them to say, okay, go ahead and move forward to the next step. And we didn't decide any of that.
No.
It was just how to draw the plans you want to see someday to, to put a cost on it. And you don't have to be meetings that just aren't open to everybody sitting here and fourteen people talking. Cause those are the meetings you don't accomplish anything, or a round, sir.
I think for everyone to be on the same page and have the same information, I think it would be a good idea to have one together.
I agree. Now, we are working, commissioners are working on having some working meetings. So our county attorney is my emeritus county justice. We all thought it was a good idea, so we're going to work towards that. We'll certainly let the council know when we're going to be doing that. So then we can address some of these things.
I'm good. We also need the people who are going to explain fixing the boiler. I think we wanted to go that route. We've, we've got to have people in here that are going to give us all the different options and prices, so we can discuss.
Like, that'll be right. If Scott, if, if, if Scott Williams, he should be in there, have his own.
But I don't think he's, he's giving one point, we need some other.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I think that's the problem. We, one or two will go talk to this person and they come back. And so you, you may have some questions or concerns that you want to ask one of us, but you weren't there. And I think that's been the problem, a lot of problems, and, and finding the right people. Having meetings, so that you can get something involved.
Yeah, even if you brought in three or four different, I don't know. You can have one at nine o'clock, one at nine thirty, one at ten.
Oh, yes.
And then we could ask them questions and get all the details and.
I think that way it could, you could start to find in your mind of, well, this guy's saying this, but this company is saying this, so which one is right, wrong? Um, I certainly think we need that.
Now, I talked to Tim and Brenda last week, you know, and Emmeresco is the only company that's put a total project together for us. And they spend a lot of time in their, a pretty reliable, um, resource in the courthouse public world. Um, but that doesn't mean there's not another valuable company locally. Um, I can name a handful off the top of my head that does renovations in schools and courthouses um, that can't come look at it and maybe give an alternative that Emmeresco hasn't or that we're unfamiliar with or, you know, there's just, there's a million different ways you could go. Um, and I'm not sure we're committed to one way or the other opposed to getting ideas and trying to decide which way we want to go at the moment, opposed to something needs to happen, one way or the other. And I don't want the council to feel like, um, I, I felt like it for a. And I don't want the council to feel like, I, I felt like it for a week now, but I'm starting to get a little better, that I've been thrown on the bus and trying to grasp for air. And I don't want you guys to feel like that from the commissioner's side. I don't know what was done prior, but I know what we can do going forward. And I know that's what our plans are, is to work with you guys and make the county, the courthouse, anything we have, you know, something one of the best that we can have. And I think that's everybody's goal here, to do it, to do it cost effectively, but yeah, keep us going in the right direction.
RQ, RQ, and then you talked to about the construction.
Yeah, they do, they do have a sister company, I think it's BW or something. They do pre-construction, and I did have an individual that reached out to me. And I said that we were gonna be meeting with the council today, so I don't know, didn't know what kind of information, you know, feedback I was gonna get from the council. Thinking he was gonna reach out to me after this meeting to see if we're gonna be progressing, you know, forward on building.
I feel better about the idea that you explained to me. Still, that meeting needs to be, sounds like a meeting as soon as we can, you know, be an executive meeting. And get somebody in here to, as you said, everybody involved and take a look at the situation.
Well, I think the other thing Mike, Andrew was saying something about the heating and everything, you know, we hadn't done anything, but if they were talking about putting explosives in there, like down your prosecutor's office. Because we didn't, we didn't wanna spend too much money on something that we didn't know we were gonna be changing.
So Chris and I, his bigger topic was specifically these two rooms up here. If you split this, obviously, heat, this heat is only in one corner of this room. If you split it, now this room isn't heated. Now you can do a split unit up in this air duct here and get heat and air out of this bulkhead. It's expensive, and if something gets renovated with that, it's wasteful. I think we've all kind of agreed that we didn't want to be wasteful at this point. So there's another radiator downstairs in the, in the storage room, whatever the room's called at the moment. That could be brought upstairs and tied into this and split it. So we could use existing heat, and then when renovated, then it can be addressed in, opposed to spending fifteen thousand dollars on a unit in this bulkhead that would get ripped down later, when the heat.
That might be a more cost-effective solution for a temperators.
Oh, it's a huge, it's, it's pennies compared to thousands, yeah. And that's what Chris said, he was like, you know, that's, that's the way he would go.
Like you're, you're right, we need to split it as far as I know, we got radiator, we got nine feet. The wall, I don't know where the walls come from.
Brad, first.
Yeah.
But that's only nine, not quite nine feet.
Eighteen.
About eighteen, here, I had, ten. Here, I was, the radiator I'm there, right here, you got your.
Right here, that's right here.
One of these guys, so that's all my problem, I don't want this to cost maybe a thousand dollars.
Couple of doors in the wall and the lights are already there, they would always come to, you know.
By the ceiling fan, maybe if you want each office, we want to reroute them.
Right.
That fan, you know, if they want to never play any, they'll have to rewire all that. That might be more expensive.
It'll be minimal. Same way with the room down there, you know, if you had a separate unit for the time being, you could use radiator, but you could, you know, have a, its own unit and not have huge, not have a huge, huge.
That's where you need your levers.
Yes.
That's a change.
Because we don't know what we really wanna do with the heating and the building. So that would be close dollars.
Yes.
That, that works otherwise.
Yes. We can still proceed with that.
I'm gonna, if you guys don't have anything else for Brianna, she's still hanging on to us here. God bless her here, from RQAW, if not, I can get her off the line. You have any questions for that architect firm, moment?
We wanna see some plans and.
Yeah, yeah, of course. And I, I think we're all anxiously awaiting plans. I would like to see a plan myself of what they have going on. So Brianna, if you don't have anything for us, I'll let you guys go. Thank you for hanging on to us here.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you so much for the invitation. If there are any questions, please feel free, call, email, text, whatever you need to do, whatever we can do to help you. Chris, you don't have anything, is that correct?
I'm okay right now.
Okay, okay, yeah, and we are working on those plans. So we really appreciate you partnering with us on this project. And like I said, just let me know if there's anything else that we can do.
Thank you both very much, and we will plan to see you next week.
All right, sounds good, see you on Monday.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, bye-bye.
Anything? Yeah, we have, I mean, now, we're bona fide, okay? We're talking about this IT contract. In October, we accrued going up to thirty-eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars a month. That was like five hundred, more than five hundred and fifty dollars a month increase. And now you just did another contract for another six hundred dollars a month, five hundred dollars a month. And I don't, what computers did we get between October and December?
He got over ten computers added that he has to maintain for different purposes. Do you guys have, how many, like, one breakdown that shows how many computers per, you know, the county, the sheriff? There's a breakdown on the contract that shows how many computers per, you know, the county, the sheriff. The emeritus said nine-one-one. Brad, well, we, that week, he had, that were added because of TACOM. So there's some people have two, you know, three computers.
Can we streamline that?
Do they need that maybe?
Well, can they, they don't, so I don't use it here.
Well, see, he's gotta maintain, you know, do FAs on each one of those, so.
I mean, there's not even, there's not money in the budget for what you're.
Four thousand, something, fifty, and I think, whatever.
And I mean, we talked previously about hiring somebody full, we could hire somebody full-time for what?
And no one provided any information as far as hiring someone, so.
I mean, we weren't even consulted about this. Another, you know, we've added a thousand dollars a month increase to IT contracts. And we also, I saw in October, we talked about keeping track of these hours and the ticket system, has that been implemented?
He does have ticket stuff. Also, I don't know if the council's aware, Brad works with us on the internet, telephone, plus the IT. None of that is listed in his contract to do. He does help eliminate some unnecessary costs with the telephone he works. He'll reach out to the telephone company to negotiate. I already have. Now, we do have a contract this time last, and I did not pay for the second year on that because for fear that they would shut down or make some changes in our telephone that Brad needed on there. Like I said, I realized I didn't have the links to develop the county with the telephone, with the internet. We do have our internet, you know, the wifi around here, and we did, the council did have, have to access it at their last meeting because new wave went down. And the other wifi that we had in here was able to pick up, you know, or the other one's not working. So he's trying to have some backup plans in to help out the county so that we can continue to function. So you're not robbed, because you know the health department's having issues, so they're with some problems, so they're wanting to seek out, they're gonna, they're gonna want to sue or something, cut, cut the lines and stuff, so they've got some issues up there, and I must have a responsibility.
I thought you said the health department, what they're paying ROM tech per computer, because they have their own contract and and this, this paper we just were given, were given, it has three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars on it. But that's not, you know, it's four thousand something now, so this is not.
I think that's very large.
This, this is.
That's what I was, that's what was with the new contract. Because if you add that, it doesn't add a.
So it's not, I didn't add it.
That's what I didn't do. There was a revised one since then, and that's where I signed, we signed two contracts. Question, give me.
Thirty-eight-seven, maybe.
Yeah, that's, that's the.
But this was what we approved.
Hey, Brad, he raised it and then lowered it.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at our October minutes, he raised it thirty-eight-seven a month. And I don't know what we were paying for nine-one-one EMS and sheriff. But the courthouse, we were paying two thousand dollars a month. And in October, he raised it to two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So that's five hundred and fifty plus whatever he raised for nine-one-one EMS and sheriff. And then we just raised it.
It went to twenty-four and then two. Went down to.
Down to twenty-four?
Yeah.
Well, we signed two contracts with two different attachments.
Brad's coming over.
She's getting hobbyist.
Copy that, okay.
Yeah.
So. Forty-two-sixty-seven, hundred and thirty-nine.
Dudley, Brad's gonna be coming over.
Ninety-seventy-five, so sheriff's department didn't change. Medichad went from three sixty to four twenty. Nine-one-one went from two twenty to two twenty-five. Courthouse, twenty-five fifty to twenty-eight fifty. So the courthouse since October has gone up eight hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Is that what you're judging?
I don't know, because I don't recall finding any computers between October and December.
Health department bought some.
Yeah, but health department, we don't have.
We had six new computers, DNA. We replaced all our computers.
You replaced them though, so you didn't get new ones?
No, we, yeah, he wasn't maintaining the old ones. If they were, nothing would be done with the old ones. And that's why I said, oh, you gotta get some new computers in. Brad, he installed the new computers, updated, got ahold of the companies that were involved with some of the ID systems that get in here and some of the ID badges that all the departments carry and stuff.
A lot of them were Randy Cleaver things, twenty-one hundred and.
And they weren't being maintained.
You need to check with the health department and see what they're paying, they're making in this contract. Okay, so while we're waiting on Brad come over, let's talk about Warren County. Have you guys met with the Warren County commissioners? Because I'm told they're meeting with Benton County to talk about joining their health department and dropping ass because they're upset on this way this building's been done. And there's been no communication, they're saying, and they're upset. And so I just wondered if you guys are reaching out to them and talking to them.
I'm aware of it. I know that when I emailed back the first part of December, the bills in Warren County, a week or so later, I did an email saying, we're not paying you because you already went after a hundred percent of it. Other than that, I, I wasn't aware that they were even considering. Then I was on the phone with Steve, I raised several times, and I sent all that information that I sent to Robin, to Steve, to review, whether he shared it with his council, I don't know. But I have very detailed reports from Kelly of what we submitted per EVA. And then our system, detailed reports of what we paid.
Well, I mean, I understand that, and, and, but I had said all along that we were wrong in submitting all the bills on ours. We should have given them a third to submit.
That's all we did, and that's all we did. Y'all realized that.
But, and Steve Everly, he, they tabled his reappointments, it was not more helpful. I don't know what they're gonna do, the commissioners are gonna reappoint him or not. But I have talked to John Comer, who's president of the council in Warren County. He's assured me they're gonna pay their bills, even if they just go ahead and pay it and then the state board accounts comes back to them and says, you know, you shouldn't have done it and we'll have to deal with that. And I said, well, maybe with this new CARES Act that just got passed, I don't know if the counties are gonna get some money or not. And maybe we can just have Warren County submit a whole bunch of the bills.
And that being said, Dudley, I, I think when I reached out to Robin well before December, and she told me they were not going to the salary reimbursement of the CARES Act, which the reason for that was so that they could just release all their funds to the county and the county council and commissioners oversee the expenditures. So they were hanging on to, EVA was hanging on to about three of our middle's. That one of them was all the community computers down the emergency management, that was one of them. So that had to come out later after we received our funds. So I went through the process to submit the salary reimbursement so that we could get the three hundred, some, three hundred and fifty thousand of this money. But Warren County did not, they weren't gonna do that. So whether they got all their funds or not, I don't know. But that was a way that they could have reimbursed Fountain County settlement. I mean, it, it was doable because they were expenses that they should have been paying, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we went back at it now, knowing what should have been done.
There were two hands in there, I mean, I had the health department doing something, I have emergency managers that are doing something, and I had a payroll person doing something. And then all of a sudden I had a here, and it's like, um, no, I think that should have been done like that because, but not everybody was on that same fault.
If more money comes up, then we need to sit down with the health department, say, you know, they're not returning claims. So you discuss it with the council and commissioners.
And that has to be discussed with Kelly, and so I think they are going about things a little bit differently. I said, really, what should they do? Give them free approval before we just spend the funds and then you assume that you're gonna give a reimbursement. And then a lot of that was done, and then a lot of the overtime was made up. Finally, I got to the point where I was having stuff in my face from all sides, and pay this, pay this, pay this. Finally, I told the health department, you, you guys need to stop, I need a timeout, so that I can regroup and figure out what you're all trying to do. Because they were just spending money like they were.
And, you know, I don't know if you guys need to maybe have a joint meeting on the Warren County.
Have they?
To get this worked out. I was just told that, that they're working with Benton County to see about dropping us from the health.
Now, do you think that's gonna be brought up, that they're, I mean, that's gonna be discussed at their pre-health board meeting?
You know, I'm going to that meeting, and I'm going to ask them at that meeting if what their intentions are. And as this, as council members, one of the, or me, that, that our Warren County was.
I'm just in the middle of one, you know, work.
Yes, you know.
Yeah.
They do that, I mean, that layoffs at the health department, I, you know, we, we need to know what the county's intentions are, and so I find it goes, and I don't know, did you get an email about the twenty, the meeting, on the twenty-first, the health department, they're gonna have a five o'clock meeting with the commissioners and the two council presidents, Warren and myself, I invited, but I don't remember. President on the count of two, you're about.
You can have, I know they did have some.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Will they take time?
What's that?
Will they take time when one also?
I haven't heard that they're talking to Ben. I haven't heard that they're talking to Benton County about doing that. But I, you know, I don't know. Like what the commissioners' intentions are in Warren County. Okay, Brad, we've got questions. Several council members have called me and asked why we went from two thousand dollars a month for the county to, what's?
Okay, so I don't have that new one. What's the new point? We're at one two six, right? So like the courthouse. So we had purchased many laptops for working on. And for those to be into our network, we keep them on remote management that way here. We have the antivirus covered. If they have trouble with their software, they can stay with help with that. We, we make phone calls for that. Any kind of Apple printers, whatever, we have as well. That thirty dollars per machine, if ever there's printers. You know, anything to do with that machine, but we also take care of the network here in the courthouse. We verify the backups. They're all good. I mean, we, we do what I need. We, you know, make sure the email is working. I mean, we get all the calls today. I don't have the current panel tickets in front of me. But we did want to take this. So we're keeping track of it. I'm trying to keep track of the time between myself and. You know, we're still due to, we're not long yet. We have to work it out. We had machines spent here at work. We're gonna reassess this every year. So if we drop machines, you know, they'll come down. But with all the commissioner's purchase. A lot of work at home. I mean, it's just more machines, a lot of work going on. It's, you know, that's, that's why we charge thirty dollars per machine. If they have trouble with their printer, anything like that, if they get new printers, we install that, we install, we small out. We get a new computer, we transfer files, you know, all that. Everything is included in that. Like who are here, you can see you're staying Friday and Sunday, getting the move from, you know, getting calling set up, getting suits set up, getting all the machines transferred. That way they get that minimal downtime. So that's, that's where, you know, it's, it's kind of. Obviously, there's different parts, but the language is kind of. These are all just included in this management. They didn't say as a day. You know, but anything in the race from those that aren't on our line. Anytime anybody calls, we're on our way. Jail is on that. Jail is on that. So, yeah, everyone's. Machines, due to the zoom stuff, they're doing it for. And then, you know, everybody, we're keeping work at home, especially, you know, if they do get quarantine. At first business, start businesses, it's not, and then we're getting the laptop, getting, probably getting set up, getting things going.
So how about Bill and I will run those paper portion and then I will build. We've built in Warren County. Other than that, it's coming out of that line item contract.
They're all in this thing. I mean, we need to do a breakdown of those, cause I can do that.
No, I just wondered if he's got his own money sometimes.
Yeah. So they did some reimbursements, so I don't know.
On EMA side, reimbursement, we're actually doing our reimbursement. Or EMA side, L A P C, that's something that we're looking there. You might have to do something with L A P C, but EMA, we're running out of funds. We're starting just to get our reimbursement for salary.
And we, we also, the phones, SaaS petty, the like the names on the phones, that would then a hundred and fifty dollar charge from Gibson for them just to change names on the phone. We went ahead and took care of all that. We're trying to, you know, we're not gonna sell phones, but we're gonna try to work on that system to save county money there too. No, I mean, that's not listed off between here. It's just my machines. Because that's our main focus is the computer tower, you know, just keep the network up and going here at the courthouse. So, you know, there's no downtime.
Any other questions?
And if you guys have any questions, don't worry. I mean, you know, doors open at the office. You're more welcome to call me if I'm by. I'll explain anything. I'll get you a party or you got all. It's, I guess it was about, if you were to call to change names on phones. So we just, you know, they, we were working with the jail here. Get, you know, we switched over to an ID flash line, uh, and then October of last year, that saved us a bunch of money versus on period, we got three years for that. And it also gave us a ten meg internet back into the courthouse. So the new, it does go down sometimes, that might, we do have that back. And it's not as fast, obviously, but it should still keep us functioning.
Time is, are we gonna, we need to have more money. Paying care of security.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have any prices on that, but the state keeps coming out with more and more mandates. You know, we're like, we, we spent. We, we had outlets put in the small place office upstairs, because these servers that are here, they're gonna do the $100 office, they're gonna go upstairs to the locker room. The state's just coming down with more and more security, cybersecurity, you know. We're working on a cybersecurity at the courthouse. So if we give you dental treatment, we'll have someone, either myself, if I'm close, my head, or someone in the courthouse can actually come up close to. So we're not downloading or we're not impacting or if you did notice a breach, we have monitors on all that. That we monitor twenty four seven. I mean, I get emails two three in the morning, time to get up and start working. So, you know, we're trying to keep this place as safe as we can. We don't wanna go through another risk and we're. Our filters that are in place, if somebody does click on a link in an email, it stops. You know, nothing's a hundred percent. I'm not saying it's a hundred percent, because obviously with the stuff you've probably seen on the news, you know. If it's open to the network, it can be hacked, but we're doing our best to keep that on that.
Changes every day.
It does. It, I mean, it's constantly evolving. We're reading and learning. So we get, uh, you know, we can say that it's, those security badge stuff is kind of down the pipe. We get that enough because, I mean, like I said, we've been, we all want to do it.
Recently fired, I got hacked.
And fire I was the thing that the state made that the election had to secure the election. Well, we all seen the news.
It's awarded the, the money that the court received from the state for the election.
It was a thing that was fun that we were supposed to and then did a check, put it in, we're gonna put it in the general.
And that was around nineteen thousand.
Ten thousand.
They didn't really specify if you're gonna get out of work, because it's just, they just, they just get to the county.
But we're gonna have to have additional later in the year because there's not enough money in the, the fund for this contract.
That's true. You can transfer additional, but I mean, you're gonna have to do additional for the probably group health insurance as well. Highway, I'm sure we're gonna have to do something because he's already committed to some leases and his birthday, that becomes a thousand. Now, Brandon, three hundred of that, three hundred thousand plus was group, is group health insurance that he normally would reimburse the county. That's not gonna be done. So the county's gonna have to take that slack there, but also it's about like two hundred thousand dollars of equipment. But the council's gonna have to figure out where we're gonna pay for the son of, because he doesn't have it in N V H. I think that's budget. And so, you know, whether it's CED, you know, I really don't have a problem or do you want to get a little bit of a riverboat? When that time comes, when he needs to make his payments. We certainly need to allow that time. We need to, there's lots of other time that money won't bring you back to it. Um, to cover those expenses that. Your pastor wants to sit down, hold Russell and I, we'll be able to do more. Those are committed to, you know, certainly.
Yeah, what would I have to see? I mean, I'm flying out of, out of Wild project. Because seeing maybe we did, I thought we did a additional for some bridge repairs out of county general. A month ago. Do you recall that right now? Yeah, I saw what I see in it.
I thought you trained, you had transfers, but. I don't have any.
I mean, because I, I didn't, it didn't click in my mind, so I see that our two bridge run has one point six million and I forgot about nine hundred and seventy thousand, you see one point six, but I thought, what did we train?
Well, we did, we did additional, didn't we?
Yeah. I thought we put that into.
I didn't do that many additional last year, but I was thinking two bridges was part of to transfer a lot, to to kind of touch some jobs.
Well, I need to look over that and see what we had. And I thought we, we just spent. We have nine hundred and seventy thousand.
I'm not allowed to work on it. So we did do a little transfer. I mean, it's about a seven.
Okay. You have anything?
Well, the only thing I had is like she just said, you know, when you got that, then we started planning for what we were going to do for this year and made orders and contracts and then she comes in, so I got fifteen hundred thousand away from you. Well, here we sit. And we did slide a bunch of money at that point. We moved it all around and, and, you know, trying to get what we could issue and care of. So when this comes, and we're looking probably May or June. And we had that, like you said, a plan to show you what we're doing. And hopefully we'll have that done by March first. About the first meeting in March, so you'll understand where we're going, how we're doing it. And as part of road recovery and what have you, will show possibility of you won't physically see the income. But two things that rang in mind, when I tear out the bridge and steal the soul, I get a big check that goes back to the general, not back to me. When I sell hydrogen farmers for their entrances, I know I'm gonna live in it, but I'm gonna live with the money that ain't paid back, so that goes back to you. When I put in school bus, turnarounds for these school buses. All that costs is out of my budget and goes back to their own.
That doesn't, goes into one seventy, or one seventy six, yeah. Nine?
It's coming back to.
Yeah, local road street, it goes back in local road.
But the other, I haven't.
So, I just keep putting that out and let us know.
It goes back into local road street. Normally, that's what I say.
The bridges. When we sold scrap metal, that check is made out to us and right back here, in general.
I don't know how much money. I just know that when pipe and everything is sold, it goes back to whatever is written on the sticky note for us to receive it back. That's what we do. So I'm thinking that, so I'm thinking your is putting it back into the fund.
Okay, just check into that. Make sure.
I will.
There's money that, that you have that's going back into county general. Let us know. And that, that helps us figure out what we can pay out of county general back.
Did you say N V H?
Well, we had, remember, we had to cut eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of their budget because the state says.
He didn't have that revenue.
I just looked.
How much?
Four twenty two that I had highway.
Four twenty two?
And then the other was the health.
Yeah, there's like eight hundred and seven.
Eight hundred and two or eight hundred.
And three hundred and some was just health insurance.
Three sixteen. What was it?
And then we ordered trucks based on what, and we voted to take it out of the roof, but we, yeah, so we had to cut, but then, and the other already ordered so many trucks. So we're gonna have to, and she just got sacked.
Like two hundred and ninety one thousand.
Well, it's everything.
It's not, it's no figure. Come in the age.
N V H, I mean, I've never extracted, has, he has ending balance four hundred and ninety nine thousand.
And N V, and eleven seventy six at N V H looks a whole lot better than what it started out in the year.
Yeah, it started out thirty ninety dollars fifty five cents. Had ending balance hundred and seventy nine thousand. I mean, we're, we're.
Now, I'm hearing that to get eleven seventy three restricted, instead of doing fifty fifty, they may change that ratio, which would be huge because a lot of counties are really hurting in their eleven seventy six. Are you gonna say please go to certain nine times or something like that? They, they did it a while now. And they're gonna change.
Well, they didn't.
That's how they base our funds back. We had nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty registered.
Yeah, you don't wanna take.
That all was Maryville. And any county under fifty thousand should be. As long as it gives two times the amount of monthly tax. Because farm land is our account, we're gonna express it either, so. And we still would have had nineteen thousand.
We need to check on that farm play too, because my son just got hit that truck and he wanted a farm thing. He said they don't do that anymore.
They? Is he a farmer? Is he owner, land owner?
Yes.
He's got his own personal account or is he tied in for someone?
No, he's got his own.
They're trying to do it where you only get one.
For farm, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, but still, our gas going, in our form, we get power and expression. They're all the low high gas burning thing. We have nineteen thousand seven hundred pickups. So our, our funds from a gas would dub it, twenty seven fifty thousand. And pickups, getting cars down county, Mary county, whatnot. And if you look right now, like the state highway, mission for drugs has more trucks than I do, more equipment than I do, more manpower than I do, yet they only go three hundred miles in this township or district. Three hundred. I have seven hundred and seventy one. I've kind of grabbed on my hat. So there's a big difference in how the state of D G L S pays money. That because we had to spend a lot of money in the year past and they take it and they're putting it to the state and they're making me sign every contract, get money back, that's my money. Should be based on our funds. And then, so then we had to jump through it and then I have to hire somebody to get seventy five percent of that money back for the subsidy payment. And come in, it's just no sense to what they're naming program on this, you know, crossing those funds. But the whole, the rural county is the one, it's, it's coming out by them. Big time. I mean, we're the one right and, and the big guys are are good executives too, very friendly. Back when I went through the state showing how to do this, figure out the formula. Mary County Highway at fifteen point five is given to them. And it doesn't exist. Then the unit aren't appropriate. So they were claiming. So they were claiming Mary County, like shiters, well, that was our backup shiters, a bad one. So just saying, uh. I'm not here to sell, it's going to be up to you right now, our roads are frightened, that's a brand new combine drive. The commissioners and the attorneys have given us a right of forty foot. Uh, they said we've always had it, but now it's becoming a label issue, and what this program I'm going to present to you, we're trying to reclaim, we're trying to reclaim. At the greater school, we had, and they said, if you can get a two inch of the grab. Out of the window, sit it down, we have two inches of grab, you're losing thirty-two thousand six hundred a year on that one, that one grant. We fill a five pound coffin, but less than a square yard of dirt. There's millions in our digits, we've never properly done a greater program system. I hope to have that implemented before I leave, and we reclaim, it's going to take three and a half years to, based on a hundred miles and a hundred days of regular weather. Why we're not ready right now, because the graders are too heavy, they'll tear down the road more than they'll help. We have a maintenance, I've always been against maintenance, until they drag rocks and stuff out in the summer, but. Right now, that's the only thing that can go down a frozen road and just peel it up, and kind of halfway, the worst words and what have you, so we handle this using. It's sitting there for years, we've never used, now we are, so hopefully that'll show off some of this winter issue. Uh. Eight years in the Air Force, first three, it was in payment maintenance, I have a nine skill level, I retained seven. The last five years, it's heavy equipment operator, third, I did attain my nine skill level, that why is my enemy? Totally. When I was asked to come back and sit in the seat, we wrote down a lot of different issues, as I had, they had. We're addressing each one of those issues, and just assume that somebody steps up to play, I'm happy. So all I'm asking you guys, if you get it set up, I'll work with you, what you want me to do, help us build that department. And then they can maintain, and they don't have to worry about that kind of stuff, I mean, that's the only reason, they help you get it set up. And the department budget and stuff, this lady hadn't helped me, I'm a secretary, I won't mess with that stuff, I got too many other things, they can get taken care of, too much computer issues, we're staying. Right now, I don't have my bridges back in there, because I left with COVID, and nobody's in the office, and nobody returned at all. So we're laying on the bridges, but these people, frankly, I hope you people, because this is a temporary seat to make. Um, I guarantee I'm not dead looking for, got called to. Said that the first two times, I think, those are three, and once we sit down and we talk, I agree to help, and that's it, we talk. Help my thing over, not do whatever, I'm not going to county insurance, I'm not doing any of that stuff, just more advisory situation, so. Man, I hope you guys understand, I'm not. I'm not here for the. Just, okay, thanks. Oh, yeah, and and so are you guys, you've been, you've been a blessing, and that makes a lot easier on the job, it does. Uh, and I were excitedly do some things this time, yeah, thinking your approved budget was going to be good, and then I. Got informed, no, they're not good, so we'll get to that here in the next month, so, and I plan to have that, uh, by hopefully March. Uh, February, you'll understand what we're crushing, okay? And if there's anything else you guys have on your one interview, I'm pretty well aware.
Anybody got anything else for Rusty? Sorry, Carter, do you have anything?
I have all the numbers put together for twenty twenty, I have it for your testing, uh, I will say that we finished out a record year, uh, run numbers. Uh, December, we had three hundred and sixteen runs, which is by far the biggest month we've had since I've been director, finished out with two thousand seven hundred and seventy runs total. So, uh, very busy year, and this month's starting out the same way. Uh, collections, not where I wanted to be, uh, last quarter, we really put a hammer on us, uh, you know, my office manager was out a month with COVID. Uh, I was out of great time, we were, been working very hard to try and get everything in, uh, they changed some of the way we collect the money, uh. We're working on getting that changed around, where a lot of this is going to be direct deposit, so we'll start seeing, you know, the numbers are low, you know, not the room from December, but we start seeing some of that picked up here. Anyway, go over in March because of that, uh, also, you know, you guys get an opportunity to let me move Jeff out of, you know, off the truck and in the office. He's Ronnie's third week, now there, and now the first two weeks, we've seen significant change in help by moving him, he's helped her out, you know, getting a lot of caught up what. Need to be caught up because of us being sophisticated, so I I think we're we're on on that minute of, you know, getting where we need to be, but. I will say we're not where we wanted to be on reflections, I know it was a concern you brought up, but I'm not overly concerned about it because. We'll pick that up, it just wasn't going to reflect in twenty twenty, you're gonna see more probably twenty twenty-one. By the way, welcome to the.
Yeah.
To the board.
Well, Rusty probably doesn't remember me, but I used to work with him at Bridgetown.
Yeah. Yeah, I just went through it.
That's okay.
Thank you.
I know, I'm, well, you know, I'm filled it already.
That's all I have, anybody have any questions for her? The other, I'm gonna ask anybody.
Maybe, yeah, I'd like to bring that up real quick, for E M A and Joe's not here, apparently, I mean, of course, but anyway, on the minutes. You guys, I want to make sure the whole council knows about the pre-rewards, have they been informed about how that's changed? On the minutes, it stated that they were gonna buy free rewards, and Rusty's gonna go to have a group extension.
Oh, right.
And that is not allowed, so we couldn't do that, so we went ahead and purchased five rewards with money, which I think it comes to a little more than what we were getting from the. The state, I don't know how much more, we thought we could go ahead and take whatever was left and take it out of the COVID money, that you guys had control of. And, uh, maybe that's, we got five little orders in there, I mean, uh, with that being said, the E M A does back Adam and and the extension office, or that sign that he was talking about, a project. Whatever the county can do in any manner, uh, would be appreciated.
Yeah, the gentleman's first, man, talk to you.
Yeah, we're gonna get together, we.
Yeah.
So, bringing you up today, Kelly, on this, uh, we received a grant of fifty-three thousand forty-eight dollars eighty-three cents. And it could only be used for messaging, education, and so we were going to buy, um.
Those are those big ones, I got one at the bottom of Fourth Street, they come up yet, says wear masks or whatever, it has.
And so, uh, we were only gonna buy free, give the rest to, uh, extension, to buy a board out for each fairgrounds, but. To help them with it, but the state said they had to have the total amount of money by December thirty-first, or we couldn't give them part of the money, so. And we had to spend all that by December thirty-first, so we bought five of those boards, it's gonna come out a little more than the fifty-three thousand of these fairgrounds. So we wanted to definitely spend all that money, and highway department can use those boards, health department can use those boards.
Yeah, we we didn't actually anywhere, we we said, not before, but what I was gonna say, when Joe said three F's, brain, because that's a blessing, he was six. We still put painted boards in the old ones, and we've got every board out there. Uh, bridges closed, we got roads closed, four different drashas, and we got up north, we've got three up north, we got those roads closed out on thirteen hundred, no, it's seven fifty, that's a major deal going in up there. So I was tickled when I found out, why, and then we go after paying the site.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, and these are, uh, super, super, I mean, they don't carry any batteries each, like the others did, it was eight thousand, put batteries in the other, or three, and then threw eight thousand dollars of batteries. Twelve years ago.
And so we won't be getting five of those.
Yeah, and they'll read it this Friday.
Oh, they'll, okay, there you go.
Check it out, and thank you, that would be enough.
But since giving the state back that money, I might as well spend it, so.
And I appreciate it.
And definitely you. We also have to, uh, the commissioners have already voted to approve, uh, CARES Act, really funding transfer to County General, uh, transfer financial adjustments to County General. Everyone have a copy of this, what we're gonna vote on?
Is there a share?
Oh, okay.
Well, I think she has a share.
That's a question, yeah, and they voted to, uh, adjustments to credits. Are we putting this back into County General, okay, so this is the money that's going back into County General, for the health. Okay, so, um, is that our motion to, um, approve the fine adjustments come out of County Care Act refunds? Okay, um, Jim Lee second, all of you there?
Yes.
Say so. Okay, anything else coming for council?
I'm gonna circle back around for a second, as we do on the same page, uh, as we get drawn from R P A W, we'll hear those with you. Um, hopefully by the end of next, uh, next week, um, do we want to try at ten point a day for a joint meeting, uh, so we can discuss the construction and heating, lab, air system? I hate to just come look at everybody next week, and say, we're staying, we're gonna look at, we don't say the same thing, we need to have a joint meeting, it is a week that works better, um, for everybody else.
Do you want to make one of our meetings join?
We can, that's fine.
But I guess, if we decide to march to join, if it was for third, instead of having another meeting.
I think, yeah, that's fine, I'm gonna say, well, let's get past our next video, at least with R P A W, I'm gonna get some of these drawn and finalized, so we can at least discuss that, um.
Okay, so you're the first, or the, or Monday end, better word?
And that one for everybody, is everybody that's.
First one's better for me, that I'm just writing this in.
Their their readings are always simple.
We're in here enough mornings in the in the cycle, and that's why we moved to the cycle for you, they're good, it'll be one of the, which will be version one, which is going first, to be better for.
And make that a joint meeting?
Yes. You should have had one, then you would have.
I I think that will take some time to get some numbers put together on everything.
That give you that time, though, to get people to come and look at the board and tell us what.
We we can, I'll work on that, on my end, yeah, if if the other, we can address it and move it back.
Okay, we're gonna need to move to the March, we have to, because I don't, I don't think you're gonna have enough time in three weeks to get people to come in here and look at all that, and get quotes and. And proposal to bring to us, if they can, that's fine, but.
Yeah.
So you're the first.
Well, we'll see this next week, when we can kind of pull together, and then.
Yeah.
Around February first, if if we see the best on you, we'll make sure to push on to March.
Okay.
Regular time, what?
Yeah.
Uh, was there anything else that you needed us to address in the meantime, that you'd like for us to address in the meantime?
Well, I know, I saw an email, you're not gonna be able to attend the the meeting on the twenty-first, I mean, uh, we need to find out what Warren County is.
Yeah, so that's what I mentioned to myself, I'm gonna reach out, um, to the Warren County Commissioners, I'll I'll, I will C C U in as well, just so we can get a graph of where those guys stand, um.
I don't know, who's the new pres- president of the commissioner?
I assume that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I I have heard that, and Tim would, Tim keeps in contact with him more than we would, and he would have said something, I have heard that, if they would have said something, yeah. Um, I will be on Zoom at that three more meeting, um.
I have to respond to the I think.
I don't think it's Tim's point, I'm.
He's not one of the.
So I don't know some of that shit chat that's happening with pulling from Mount County is a way to, um, is the Dr. Sharma issue, I don't know if that was some issue.
The council member that told me about this said it, it's not an issue with Dr. Sharma, it's an issue with billing, and that's why they're they're fighting with them, council.
I think it would do us all some good to have some one-on-one conversations with everybody.
And and and, you know, the commissioner, council understands the problem that we applied for all the CARES Act, and we should have given them a third of the bills. But evidently, the commissioners cannot get that through their head up there, that, um, that's the problem, and that's why we're trying to get.
Well, I know the alligators came alive, and I think we did this wrong, and trying to talk with Robin, I don't know. Who is involved in the communication, because the I offer to talk to, no, we don't want you to come yet. So then nothing's done. And and I just think that there's a lack of understanding of how, um, it all first started out, when we first started submitting, and then how how is it gonna work now, that we got a little more in county? That was not allowed, by any of us. Kelly's aware of it, her and I kind of tweaked the to make work for the third quarter, they're willing to make the third quarter, but they wanted me to resubmit. What I already submitted, I thought. Because I think we need to have a sit, someone is planning to have a sit down, so that we can discuss what's been done, why it was done that way.
Obviously, the council commissioners have talked to you about.
No, not at work, I mean, and I mean, I have detailed information of how everything was done. I don't know.
I'll reach out, I guess, to the community, get at least some communication, get the thoughts.
And not, at least maybe we can get some answers on the the twenty-first, if that means, so. Now, I I did hear Warren County reappointed, Dr. Inman said about Warren Health Board, but it did, they tabled. Steve Everly, so, I mean, and I know you had said, Steve Everly said, no, I definitely pay up, but I mean, he must not have much influence with the commissioners, if they're not gonna.
Well, I think he was reaching out to the council, you know, that's what he told me, but I didn't feel like it was my right to to reach out to him and talk to him about, but then no one has reached out to me and. And asked me, how did you arrive at all this?
I know, and the council understands it, because I've talked to the president and the vice president, both of the Warren County Council, and he understands what we did, and and.
Right.
So he said, we're gonna pay you, that's, you know, I don't know, commissioner.
I mean, I agree, it was not done, but it was already too late, everything was submitted.
Okay, just passing that along. Well, there's, okay, anyone else have anything else?
I just have a question, who is the county health officer now, or the public, is Charlotte still?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I had heard that he was stepping down, I didn't know that.
That's, that was on Facebook, I saw that too.
Yeah, and I.
Some people had said December thirty-first was his last day, but, um, everyone else tells me that's not true, and, I mean, he's still there as far as I'm. And, and, I mean, he's still there as far as I'm.
Well, somebody asked, I'm gonna be able to tell them, cause I've had people ask me and I, I have no idea.
He's not submitted anything and, and see, and, and the commissioners do not appoint that, that's what they found out, it's the health board that's.
Does this.
Yeah, so.
And he is under contract, I understand, anyway, so it's not like that.
And, and the rest of the board, looking at their, um, the replacement, Brian Duncan was replaced. I'm not so sure they used the right timeline. It's like they put four years on them, because if, it's my understanding that every year someone would be.
Right.
Well, there's like two of them on the same year, so that can't be right.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, the same, that's why in Warren County, one of them is, is fulfilling, I mean, Steve Everly was filling someone's term and that, that shouldn't be a four-year term, it just.
Like it should be, whether they're mine or yours.
It should be just one per year.
And so it's not come out right, and I did question Kelly on that.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be in?
We have to go back in five minutes to see when Brian Duncan's term and then because of when he started and then.
I think Kelly addressed that, did she not send you an email that you had something?
That was not clarifying, in my opinion, that did not clarify, because she didn't tell me what Brian Duncan's term was. Just went off of to replace Hannah and had it four years.
Right.
Well, clearly it should have been to remain the. Then, then.
Right, and it should be one, one appointment every four years, so, you know, every year, so all four.
None individual, you just kind of deal with someone else, you didn't have two of them.
And if we're paying two-thirds, we should have two-thirds of board members, in my opinion, in that town.
Well, they're gonna be, they're gonna be in much better than we're doing, I think.
I mean, but we also have to look at whatever that agreement with that.
We have another back in eighty-seven, you know, come around, she's been, she's been, she's been, she's been. Four and a half minutes and a couple of ten minutes, it's why I'm on this, that was on that. That's maybe the other place, because that's usually the one that's.
I'm curious, the state has changed, they should actually get a state law that mentions mountain and Warren County and the health department, because we were, we still are. Separate from everybody else when it comes to the health department, they've changed that code.
Okay.
They've changed that code, so it doesn't state, uh, Warren County, it was just set county or city, okay? Every word of the thing, I think an attorney needs to read it because I think we changed, we, the new law.
I can also get all Phil Boots and Sharon Nagel and, and Alan Morrison and make them look and ask if they always answer any questions they were asked themselves.
Yeah, I haven't been revealed and changed, so that it didn't, because they, like I said, we should state, you know, mountain, Warren County. Okay, we were the only ones that were doing that.
All right, I'll, I'll get hold of our legislators and see what they can find out about it.
Once we get into the west, we'll.
I haven't seen an email in a few years. I talked to them, but you gotta get the information. Really, it's Dudley3@Yahoo.com.
Hey, Yahoo?
Yeah.
Got you. I don't give a.
Everybody's email.
Emails, my cell phone, everything's on there, so. Okay, anything else? Been a long meeting today. Uh, next meeting will be February the eighth, nine AM. Unless we have a joint meeting on February first, okay, our motion to adjourn. Okay, second? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Jim, for being on there.
You bet. I'll visit with you later, Dudley.
I'll speak with you later.
Okay.